I'll call to order Planning Commission meeting October 21st, 2025. Can I get a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hillman.
Present.
Commissioner Skosol.
Present.
Commissioner Nordmo.
Present.
Commissioner Robinson.
Present.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Hammond.
Present.
Commissioner Clark.
Can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Clark's tardiness?
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Clark from the meeting.
I second.
The motion's been made and seconded?
Commissioner, um, start, let me see, Abraham.
Present.
So we're voting on the motion to...
Oh, oh, you want to second it?
I was already been seconded, so it's a yes or no vote.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Nordmo.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond.
You call me?
Yes. Commissioner Robinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hillman.
Yes.
Commissioner Skosol.
Yes.
Hearing no noes, the motion passes. Has everybody received the agenda in the agenda packet for this evening? Very good. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as Mr. P. D.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded.
Okay, so Commissioner Robinson.
We're voting on the motion to approve the agenda.
Yes.
Commissioner Hillman.
Yes.
Commissioner Nordmo.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Abraham.
Yes.
Commissioner Skosol.
Yes.
Hearing no noes, motion passes. I can simply call for a yea and nay, right? Okay, sorry to put you through that. Next, approval of meeting minutes. Has everybody been able to review our meeting minutes from the September meeting? Very good. I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our September meeting.
I make the motion to approve them, you know, minutes from September.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Up next is public comment. Again, you'll have three minutes to comment on whatever you'd like. Of course, you may have questions over the course of your public comments, which we'll do our best to address later down the agenda, but this is not a dialogue back and forth in the meantime. Any matters for public comment? Yes.
Wouldn't be a meeting without me, would it? Well, this is going to be short because I actually have another meeting on right now I have to go to, so I'll watch online to see what your answers are. But my question is about those buildings on Southfield Road, commercial buildings that go back to the 50s, to the 60s, and so forth. I've mentioned it on a number of occasions here into council. And my question is, what is going to be done to liaise with Preservation Michigan about getting historic district grants and for refurbishing these buildings and to getting them back into shape to try and do something about the sorry state of Southfield Road? I've told you I've got a list of all of them. Tim, I think you want to go out with me one time and have a look, or some of you do. So I just want to know about liaising with Preservation Michigan. I am a member of it. And a plan to look for grants to help the landlords of some of those places get them up and running.
Thank you, Diane. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Old business and tabled items, 6A, proposed cryptocurrency ATM ordinance.
Yes. Welcome to your area.
I'm sorry, I skipped the pledge of allegiance.
Oh.
I'm new to this.
That's okay.
Can we pause to do the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's what the music industry calls a remix. Sorry, Austin, take it away, please.
No, thank you, Dennis, for pointing that out. During the last three meetings, we've been discussing a proposed ordinance that would regulate the installation and management of ATM cryptocurrency ATMs. These machines currently are designed for Bitcoin, but have the ability in the future to be for other cryptocurrencies. There are a number of them in the surrounding area around us, but none currently in our community. And during the discussions over the last few months, we've talked about the location, we've talked about the distance, we talked about a potential full outright ban. That was, a full outright ban, as Attorney Baker pointed out, would be potentially problematic down the road if a lawsuit were to come. There's currently no city in the state of Michigan that has done an outright ban. The city of Gross Point Park has done an ordinance that requires them to be registered with the city and also have a warning label on them, which is what we're looking to do here. This new language that's been provided by Eric Peach from Giffords Webster, who unfortunately couldn't be here with us tonight, it identifies the location as the Commercial Vehicle District for where these machines could be located. It would require registration with the city police department. It would require a distance, a minimum distance between two machines. And it would also require that a warning label be on the front, so any user would have to see it prior to using the machine itself and talk about potential fraud. Another item that the board asked for was a response from the city's police department. And our newly mentored police chief, Michael Zhang, has provided input on his analysis, his review, and also his experience with cryptocurrency ATMs and the fraud. Tim, would you like me to read it off?
I don't think we need to.
Okay. So we're here to discuss it because we have a public hearing scheduled for our next meeting in November, which I believe is the 18th, but let me confirm. It's actually the... Yes, it is the 18th. So that is when we'll be voting on this item. So this is just one last go-through to go through the language, make sure it's what we're looking to achieve. It's doing what we would like before we take a vote and potentially to pass it on and recommend to council to doubt this new ordinance.
Thank you. To put a fine point on that, of course, we're not voting on anything this evening. Next month at our November meeting, after we hold a public hearing on the matter, we'll vote to recommend this ordinance to council or not. Today is just to iron out any other wrinkles we might find with the language in preparation for next month's public hearing. Is that clear to everybody? Okay. Any discussion?
Well, the recommendations from Mr. Zhang, excuse me, he recommended considering a limit on losses or a limit on withdrawals, a daily limit, and secondary approval from the store owner for larger transaction amounts. I mean, do you have... If we ask for his recommendations, we have some. So do we need to discuss them at this time?
I think we should. If you're looking at the language itself, Section 4, Number 5, bullet points A and B address these withdrawal limits. Essentially, they read, "An ATM shall not process any transactions greater than $1,000 during any 24-hour period, nor more than $5,000 during the 14 days during the 14 days that such customer qualifies as a new customer." Austin, do we know if these numbers, 1,000 and 5,000, are arbitrary? Are these numbers that other municipalities use in their ordinances? Do you know the origin of these numbers?
Yeah, these numbers came about during research that Eric completed about other communities. It has been more prevalent out West, these type of ordinances requiring registration. And I can't recall off the top of my head if the Gross Point Park ordinance, it did not, it did not. So I believe these are from Chief Zhang's own personal research.
Okay. And as I understand...
I'm sorry, Eric's personal research.
And I understand these withdrawal limits are only applicable to quote-unquote "new customers." Am I right to interpret that a new customer is somebody who's utilized this machine for the first time within the prior 14 days?
The way I interpreted it was that it was someone who's using the machine for the first time, not first time within the 14 days, but that is something we could specify in the language.
I'm curious if there's any discussion on that. I was confused about the new customer of it all.
Who's keeping the records of...
Right, how would we know if they're a new customer or not?
Yeah, that is something we'd have to see if... I'm not aware if the technology of the ATM machines have that. I know they do have withdrawal limits, but to identify an individual and identify them as a new customer might be difficult to enforce.
I imagine it would have to be enforced in the software, right? That like there, you'd have to provide an additional secondary PIN, which would be provided to you by an agent that you would speak to over the phone. And they would give you a number, you would enter it, and then it would process it. So it's not something we can really enforce or that the police department could enforce. It's something that we could require the software and the ATM to support.
That's something we can look into, to see if the software on these machines are capable of identifying someone who is new to the machine or if it's somebody who is new within the last 14 days. So we can take a look to see if those can actually be enforced. Because at this point, based on Eric's research, it looks that there is a possibility that this can be done, but we would like to just guarantee that the machines can actually be monitored for new customers.
My thoughts on the new customer aspect of it, I think it's going to be... One, I think it's going to be very, like as you indicated, I think it's going to be very difficult to actually monitor and enforce that. And two, my understanding, and I haven't had a conversation with... He's still Lieutenant Zhang until January, but interim chief Zhang. But I haven't had a conversation with him directly about this. But my understanding of the way these things work is people are importing money into some other users' account, so they may or may not actually have their own account. It's just literally oftentimes inserting cash into a machine, which would require you to have an account. So my preference would be to have a transaction limit, regardless of new user, first-time user, old user. Just leave it at that. I think those are, those would be more enforceable because those are, as Austin indicated, pretty typical on ATMs. For a regular bank, you have a transaction limit, per transaction, and then a daily one. I think it gets a little more complicated when you start tracking over a couple of weeks because again, I think a lot of these scams are sent to, as Zhang indicated in his email, they're sent to an account and then they're moved to another account, and then moved to another account, and then ultimately they just kind of disappear. So from an enforcement standpoint, I think putting just daily transaction limits at something that, you know, can easily be verified by going in, seeing if you can put in $25,000 into the machine. And if it lets you, then obviously that's an issue with the owner of the machine. Then that would be a violation, so.
And going on Scott's point, Zhang did indicate in his response to me for PD's input that there was recently a resident who was a victim of crypto scam and they lost $60,000 in cash to the scam.
Of course, we don't know if that person deposited $60,000 at once or over a course of several days, but our discussion, and thank you for articulating that, Attorney Baker, I was having similar thoughts but didn't know how to get them out. I too am questioning the necessity of defining new customers at all. Does it make sense for us to simply define deposit limits or withdrawal? I don't know if withdrawals are relevant to this, but deposit limits in a single-day period or a 14-day period or whatever else it might be?
Yeah, I think that a daily limit, just like your bank. A daily limit, if your bank lets you take out up to $1,000, probably not that steep for this machine, but definitely a daily limit.
Yeah, because that's typical for other ATMs. So it's something that's not new, where as Scott said, the requiring identification, requiring new verification, something that other ATMs have not done or required. So the machines are supposed to be similar to a traditional ATM where you use your debit card. So I, yeah, I would say that having a transaction limit and a location restriction and a distance between the machines would be the most easily enforceable ordinance.
And say, for instance, if there's a daily limit, is there a way to limit, so your daily limit is $300, but you can't make more than this number of transactions in a week's time? For $300, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, could somebody be scamming where they're telling them to deposit the maximum like 500 every day?
Right.
For 10 days?
Yeah.
I just want to state that I support these ideas. I think it's important for us to try and find solutions to reduce the opportunity for fraud. But with the traditional bank ATM, those types of anti-fraud measures are actually imposed by the operator of the ATM, right? Which is usually a bank or an ATM network. So this is a little bit different, having the government kind of try to encourage or force the operator of the ATM to enforce those types of anti-fraud measures.
Well, we're... Our enforcement is, they have to demonstrate us to us that the machine's programmed to do that.
Yeah, so how do we do that? Like, does the police department come and they look at a report? Like, what's the mechanism that's used to do that? If the bank is implementing the measures on the ATM that they own and operate, it's very easy for them to make sure that that is done in a appropriate way or that it's done at all. This is a little bit different, right? Because it's coming from the government telling the operator to do X, Y, and Z.
I mean, the, one possibility is when somebody makes a complaint and we find out they've violated that rule, then they kiss the location goodbye and pay a fine.
Yeah, so that probably needs to be stated too. Like, if the ordinances are violated, what's the repercussion, right? Loss of the license or the registration of the machine and with that, an inability to operate.
And the other question I did have is whether or not, are these machines, do... I could come to you if I was a vendor, if I had a vending machine and say, "I want to put my machine in your business." So do these machines actually belong to these, you know, gas stations or wherever they're located? Or are they just leasing a corner or a space in there?
I believe it's a little bit of both.
Yeah.
I think some of them are owned by the proprietor where they are located and some are leased and the location is selected by an investor who has no input on the actual building ownership.
And so how would we impose sanctions on the owner of the business for the machine that's sitting? That, well, I guess if they're leasing a space to them, they should know what...
I think from an enforcement standpoint, to address Jason's point and your point, that would be addressed through the licensing. So the owner of the machine, not necessarily the property owner where it's located, would be the one that would be responsible for obtaining a license. And at that point, a condition of obtaining that license is at least an acknowledgement and an agreement that you're going to be putting these transaction limits onto your machine. Verifying it, that could be, you know, could be something that's spot-checked by law enforcement or code enforcement or complaint-driven, but at least annually, it would be a condition of their licensing that they would have, you know, we would probably, I'm sure, looking over my shoulder, somebody would probably create an application form that would be specific to this particular type of a use and that that would be a condition of that license.
I have a question. Have we been able to do any research to understand the frequency for those that have these machines installed of use? We talked about having two in the community and having them between the mile roads. Do we know how often they're used? And is that frequency something we should consider?
That is something we've now looked at, to see how often the machines are actually being used. We've been looking more towards the, what has happened to those who've been scammed? So, and to see if there's any type of correlation between use and how often is one of the transactions fraudulent or a part of a crime? I think that's really hard to actually pin down because of the style of, or what the actual cryptocurrency is meant to be is not as transparent as a traditional financial institution. So I think it would be very difficult to understand if, you know, there's 100 transactions, you know, are 20 of them, 30 of them, 40 of them, 50 of them actually a part of a scam? So, but that is something we have, we can look into so we can have more information for you next month. That's above your...
Because my thought is, as people use them, sometimes it's embarrassing to identify the fact that I've been scammed.
True.
So as a community, we may not even know about it. We don't know where to check. So something about that data would be helpful, I think.
And I think that was part of what Lieutenant Zhang was trying to tell us with the recent case of scammers. That individual, you know, they came in and it had to be a little, you know, not judging, but a little embarrassing to say, you know, you were a part of a scam. And you're right, there are a lot of people who probably do not come forward because of embarrassment. And there's a large amount of funds that are lost. And the actual overall amount that the FBI is tracking for scams that have occurred and money that, money people have lost, it may be much higher than what they're estimating. And that's a great point, yeah.
And just remember, some of those machines are mixed-use. Some of them are actual ATMs, but they have a cryptocurrency option on them.
I'm supposing this, of course, but to your point, Commissioner Abraham, my gut tells me that people who are being defrauded by these machines at a grand scale, the $60,000 example for, the $60,000 instance, for example, my gut tells me these people are probably depositing large amounts of cash at a time. And in fact, that's, that, again, I'm supposing this, but the clerk sent us that video to watch from ABC News. And of course, the woman featured in that video was depositing something like $25,000 at once or something to that effect. So I like the idea of limiting the transactions to certain sizes because at least optimistically, I'd like to believe that if somebody's deposited five instances of $1,000 at a time and become embarrassed after the fifth time, that at least we've kind of, you know, put a roadblock in there for them to go to 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, 9,000. So I do like the, I do like the imposition of these transaction limits. I just don't necessarily love them in their current iteration in this new customer paradigm. So I think it, I would prefer for at least us, for us to iron out what these transaction limits are and see if Eric can compose something that aligns with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I support that too. It's got to be as simple as possible, right? We can't make it really onerous to try and do things like figure out who's new and who's not. I think doing things like implementing something like a new customer requirement or control encourages people who are trying to commit fraud to then do things like use multiple accounts, right? So, yeah, let's make it simple. Let's not worry about like, how long has this person been using this machine or have they ever made a transaction ever before? Just implement simple transaction level and daily limits.
And the ordinance was based off of Gross Point Farms and their limits are the same as the ones we are proposing. $1,000 per day, 5,000, or 14.
Excuse me. If anyone doesn't have their lapel mic on, could you put it on if anyone doesn't? Thank you.
I also support, for what it's worth, some recommendations we've heard about upon registration, the owners of these machines need to attest that these deposit limits must be enforced. And as a matter of how we enforce that, I think Commissioner Nordmo has a point that we enforce it upon learning that they've been violated by way of a complaint to our police department. I don't know that the city has a mechanism to, you know, visit these machines on a routine basis to ensure the deposit limit is there, unless there's a mechanism I don't know of.
Well, Scott kind of alerted to it that it could be done via code enforcement or police department enforcement. It's something that would have to be proceduralized by, probably with help from the city admin chief.
That might be part of the annual inspection. There might be a part of the software where you can see where the limits are set at and to make sure that they're set at the appropriate limits.
And that's what it would have to be because nobody's going to stand there and try to shove $25,000 in there and see if it's going to go. I mean, I'm not.
You don't have $20,000 to test on that?
Well, I might, but I'm gonna.
Not willing to.
I have a clarifying question. So we're trying to figure out the language we want to use so that when somebody does want to apply for space to have a crypto ATM in our city, then they have to have all of, like, the stipulations that we have have down already, like, in the software or enforced in some way before they can install a machine in our city? Is that correct?
Yes, we're talking about registering the machines and then upon registration, attesting that they will comply with these limitations we have in place.
Okay. And so then that's where the enforcement comes in with either code enforcement or the police?
That's what I'm hearing, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just want to clarify with all the same things that...
Are we okay then with 5A, as it's described, just absent this new customer verbiage? Just make this applicable to any customer utilizing these machines?
I would agree.
I agree.
Okay. Any other feedback on that? What about 5B? This is getting into the weeds a little bit deeper. It sounds like, as suggested by Giffords Webster, a first transaction that exceeds $500 would require verbal confirmation via some type of telephone or video call at the machine. Is this a reasonable expectation, in your opinion?
This is a component of the Gross Point Park ordinance.
Okay. Can you help us understand, or perhaps me, understand what that looks like? So there's some type of device on the ATM machine over which you interact with somebody at a telephone number?
I believe so, and I've seen some of them that actually have had a telephone on the machine itself. So I think that's how the transaction would be, or the first transaction would be actually conducted, or there'd be a number on there for them to call.
Okay.
You could also use a QR code, right? In an app on your phone that you pre-register before you went to the ATM. It's possibly, it kind of depends on what the vendor of the ATM provides.
Sure. This is a potentially silly question, but how does the machine know that this is your first transaction? Especially in the event that a fraudulent person is asking for somebody to deposit money into their account? Presumably that account has been deposited into many times already thereby not being a new customer from the ATM's perspective.
I believe it would be the individual who's sending the currency, not the individual receiving the currency. So there would have to be a component where an individual who is depositing the currency to be sent would either be verified at the machine as a new customer, go through the process of confirming yourself with the company, or it would be, the machine would recognize you as a returning customer and you could proceed.
So I'm not sure how many of you have ever used Western Union? There used to be a system where the little phone was right next to, and you pick up and you dial and you say, "I'm trying to send this amount of money." And they say, "Where are you sending it to?", so on and so forth. What I'm hearing you say is that's the similar process?
Yes.
And I have the same concerns with enforcement of that as I did with the new customers. You are correct, this is language that's in the Gross Point Farms ordinance. I don't know how they intend to enforce it there. I think you're going to, I think you're going to run into the same issues unless you have someone there watching essentially every transaction to make sure that this phone or camera is being utilized. And then to take it a step further, I don't know necessarily that the person that you connect with is going to have the ability to verify, you know, the account that you're sending the money to. Is it who they claim it to be? Or have the ability to verify that? So I think it, it sounds good, you know, an added layer of protection. But I think when it comes to actual practical application and enforcement, I think it's, to Jason's point, is overly complex. I mean, I think a simple daily transaction limit... I mean, I think a simple daily transaction limit or an aggregate transaction limit for a period of days, really the objective is to mitigate the potential loss to our residents and other individuals that utilize these machines. And if you put, if someone's telling you to put twenty thousand dollars into the machine and you get there and you can only put a thousand in, you know, I don't know how willing this fraudster is gonna be to, "Okay, well, I'm gonna be with you for the next twenty days." And you may inquire like, "Okay, what am I buying?" Or, "What am I getting?" Or, "You said you were gonna release my grandson if I sent this money and, you know, tomorrow your grandson gets off the bus and this, like, what's going on?" You know, the likelihood that you're gonna realize that you're engaged in a fraudulent scheme, the longer it is drawn out, the more likely they are to make that realization. So, you know, our, our objective is not to prevent all fraud or verify every single transaction. It's to mitigate the potential loss. And I think, you know, from, again, you know, Jason's point of this, you know, typically banks impose these restrictions because it's, they're responsible for the, for the lost monies. And so it's a, it's a loss prevention mitigation strategy on their part. This, you know, the owner of these, or the operators of these, these machines, they, they don't have any skin in the game. And they may, may get a small percentage of a transaction fee, and then the property owner may get a smaller percentage of that. But they don't really have a vested interest. It's not their money. They're not insuring the money. They're not receiving the money. So I, I think, you know, the simpler that the regulation is, the simpler the requirements are, the easier it's gonna be to actually apply it and have, you know, have some, some ability and some mechanism to, to enforce or ensure that it's being, it is being actually limited in that fashion.
Yeah, I think Scott, you completely summed it up well there, that the intent of any ordinance is to protect our residents and visitors, but it's also a balance to not be overly burdensome from those who are legitimately using the ATM for a transaction.
My concern with five B is, could it be viewed as a poison pill requirement just to make it economically unfeasible to even set up such a system?
That was something I also thought about, was that if, in zoning, if it was zoned, a use was zoned in a way where you almost could not actually use any property for that use, then you're technically banning it through...
Well, that, that's a practice known as exclusionary zoning.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying.
That's frowned upon.
And that's what I'm, I'm getting at here, is that it is a little like that, where they're trying to make it so difficult that nobody actually uses the machine.
And machines are never installed.
Or installed, yeah.
And then we could be sued for that.
Upon reading this the first time, and even more now, my personal opinion on five B is that it's overly fussy.
Okay.
Superfluous, and I don't even know how it would work. So my inclination would be to strike it altogether, but of course, mine isn't the only inclination that matters. Is anybody else in support of that?
I am.
So would we be comfortable with a section five that's modified to impose transaction limits as defined, but on all transactions, not just those relevant to new customers, and then striking five B altogether?
I agree.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I would like a question, I have a question on A.
By all means.
Limit of five thousand during the fourteen days that the customer qualifies as a new customer, how about on any fourteen day period? Without getting into the new customer thing.
Yeah, I happen to agree with that. And maybe I breezed over it, but I do, I, I do agree that in striking the new customer of it all, that these limits apply always and forever.
Yes.
And so in any fourteen day period, whether you're a new customer, a middle-aged customer, or an elderly customer, in terms of your tenure on that machine, you've got a five thousand dollar fourteen day transaction.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a, a safety stop, in case somebody is actually being fraud, being victim of fraud, that if they're not aware of it, or they don't feel comfortable enough coming forward, at least the machine would stop you, or at least would stop in the city, anybody from being victimized even further.
Makes it also less lucrative to set these up.
Yes.
And the other thing is, if you, if you are a resident who utilizes this fungible currency, if you're only able to do a certain amount in a transaction in this area, you will go and find the machine somewhere else. And I'm, I'm saying someone who's legitimately trying to purchase cryptocurrency. Those are typically the people who are not our most vulnerable citizens, if they're, if they're, you know, savvy enough to understand cryptocurrency.
I had the same thought. I would venture to guess, and again, this is a supposition, that if the fraud, if the fraudster is telling you to go here on Monday and then, oh wait, now you gotta go there on Tuesday, and oh wait, now you gotta go there on Wednesday, that seems like it would be a deterrent to that person who's being victimized. But to your point, if you were somebody that was legitimately trying to utilize this technology, you would simply go across Twelve Mile into Southfield and use that machine. Okay. Do we need any more discussion on point five? I think we've got it. To strike the new customer of it all, remove B, and keep the limits in place for all customers, new or otherwise.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will we move forward with that? So would that mean, instructing B altogether, so we don't wanna have the five hundred dollar limit as a thing as well? I know the, the fussy part was like the verifying the five hundred dollar limit, but we just don't wanna have a five hundred dollar limit altogether?
Tim, could you repeat that?
She's questioning the five hundred dollar limit portion of B. My interpretation of this is the five hundred relates to the new customer of it all. And so if we're striking the new customer of it all, the five hundred kind of goes away with it.
Right.
And one can commit to a thousand dollar transactions up until five in any fourteen day period.
One other thing that I wanted to point, I don't wanna jump in front if you were gonna get to it, but Austin had mentioned that there were gonna be proximity limits with respect to how they could be located. I know that's something that we did discuss last month, but I don't know if it just didn't make it into this version.
No, it did not include.
I think that would fit under the section three point one six E development standards, similar to what we have implemented for small box retail or discount retail and money service businesses.
I agree. And you're right, Scott, you cut me off. I was gonna bring that up next.
Sorry.
No problem. I, I think this is important because, as I understand from our previous discussions, these Bitcoin ATM machines are typically located in places like liquor stores, gas stations, et cetera. Well, I can think of at least one commercial vehicular district in Letherton Village where there is both a gas station and a liquor store in very close proximity to each other. And I think our intention in limiting the proliferation of these would be to not allow for there to be one in that gas station and also in that liquor store, just a few stops down the road. So I would also support a mileage restriction so that if these were to appear in Letherton Village, there would at least be, for example, a mile between them, thereby putting one, perhaps at the gas station south of the freeway, and perhaps at one north of the freeway.
I think we had discussed last month, a thousand feet, but a mile should be fine as well, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, whatever this body's preference is, but I think we did a mile.
Is that what we had?
I think that's what we put for the other, the other one, so.
The check cashing.
Small box. Yeah, 'cause I think that's what it was, that we wanna match, mimic the check cashing and big box.
I mean, you could, you could use, I mean, there's no requirement that they all have to be uniform. I mean, you could have one that's five hundred feet, one that's a thousand, one that's a mile, but it makes sense. I mean, the way your zoning districts are set up, I mean, it pretty much by default would be a mile because our, our commercial vehicular districts are.
Right, of course.
Is there any further discussion on that, putting a gap in the distance between these machines? We're comfortable with a mile?
A mile.
A mile.
Okay.
How long is Letherton?
How long is Letherton Village? A mile and a half?
Uh, I think it's one and a half.
Twelve to Lincoln?
Yeah, about one and a half.
So presumably, what I'm thinking of, again, of course hypothetically, if there's one of these machines at the gas station at twelve in Southfield, the only, I think, feasible next stop would be where the gas station is south of the freeway.
Yeah, I think maybe the only other place would be at Evergreen, an eleven mile. And I don't know if that would actually be far enough.
Isn't the last couple of hundred feet toward Evergreen, isn't that Southfield?
Uh, the corner is still Letherton Village.
Is that commercial vehicular?
I don't think Michigan First is gonna be putting in a quick.
I also, is that, I don't believe that's commercial vehicular either.
There would be a location, they already got ATMs.
No, that's not, that's, that's over, gateway overlay.
Yeah, I believe our commercial vehicular districts are only a lot south over.
You're right, that's the gateway overlay district. So that wouldn't be applicable.
Yeah. Okay. I personally did not have any, I have a few miscellaneous questions about this, but I don't have any other points to bring up about the language as is. Has anybody else got anything to add to this discussion?
If anybody has any input between now and our public hearing in November, please don't hesitate in sending me an email or a call.
Do we have to vote on these recommendations?
No, I don't think so.
Committee is the whole.
That's right. So Austin will feed our feedback to Eric at Giffords Webster, of course, and by the time we're here next month for the public hearing, hopefully we've got a squeaky clean, squeaky clean verbiage to have a public hearing about and cast our votes.
Yeah, so we'll be voting on two items. It'll be the ordinance, the public hearing for the ordinance, and then there'll also be a site plan that we brought.
Very good. Can I ask two very quick questions on the topic? It came up asking the city council to impose a moratorium on Bitcoin ATM machines until action is taken on this. Is that an option?
Yeah, that's an option.
Okay. Because the way I'm looking at it, we'll host a public hearing in November, assuming that ordinance passes this commission, it'll go to the council in December to act. And so we have exposure between now and presumably December for these things to pop up. And so I might suggest, unless folks have feedback to the contrary, that we liaison with council to consider a moratorium on these installations until we resolve this ordinance language.
Yeah, I'll request to get it added to the next.
Yeah, the, the only thing is, it's probably not gonna happen until the end of November, so you're only gonna have about a three-week moratorium, so, but just so you're aware of it.
Yeah. Okay. Second question, this is for the group. Assuming this ordinance flows through all the channels it needs to, to become enacted, is it appropriate, then, to, to issue memorandums to businesses within the commercial vehicular district, notifying them of these new ordinances? In doing so, does that encourage them to race to install one? I can see pros and cons to publicizing this, if that makes sense. And I know I'm ahead of myself, but it's a question lingering in my mind, anyway.
So there's no direct requirement that we provide actual notice of ordinance updates or new ordinances? The only requirement is that, as is the case like last night, the solar ordinance was approved by city council. So there'll be a notice published in the paper called the Notice of Adoption, just indicating that an ordinance, and it's, typically they're pretty vague, they don't have all the specifics and details of what the ordinance contains, but it's just a general announcement that the city has adopted an ordinance with respect to solar energy systems. This would be similar type of a notice that, just that the city has adopted an ordinance regulating and licensing cryptocurrency ATM. So nothing saying you couldn't do that if you wanted to, but there is no requirement that, that business owners or anyone be put on notice that the ordinance has been approved.
Is it worthwhile having any discussion about that now, about our opinions on whether or not notices should go out to businesses in the commercial vehicular district?
We're, we're talking right after the recommendation to council?
I'm thinking about if council approves an ordinance we put in front of it, should we recommend that notification go out to the businesses in the vehicular commercial districts where these ATM machines might appear? Or if that simply encourages them to.
I'm afraid it would.
Race to getting them.
Well, I mean, the, the public meeting is gonna encourage them to race if that's the case. Because once we have the whole conversation on, on the eighteenth of November, they will, the cat's out of the bag. And if that's what I'm looking to do, then let me go ahead and get my licensing and get my machine in now before this goes into effect.
And we've been discussing this since August, or I'm sorry, July.
Cat's been out of the bag for a while.
The bag's over there, the cat's over there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, they're, if they're, you know, aware, if they're watching, they're, they're aware. So I don't, I don't think that's a problem, just sending a, a more formal notice subsequent to the, the vote.
And there's not that many businesses actually in the vehicular district, so that isn't a heavy lift to complete.
Right. So we're leaning more towards sending out notices, or is the, the overall ordinance announcement, would that be enough for the community and the businesses affected?
Because it will be published, published, most likely, in the Southfield Sun. So many of the residents do receive it, so it would be published there. But that necessarily doesn't say the business owners would receive it. So if we feel like after the public hearing next month, that this is something you'd like us to pursue, once council adopts and we publish it, the notice in the paper, we can pub, send letters to the business owners that there is a new ordinance and this is the language.
Sure. And of course, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. And does it go into effect immediately?
Once it's been published.
Ten days after publication.
So this is the new ordinance that goes into effect within the next ten days?
Yeah. It could be something just as simple as that, with the language on it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, it's something to chew on, and certainly something we don't need to decide, and perhaps council will have an opinion on this also that, you know, either supports or goes against ours. So something to chew on. Any other discussion about this proposed cryptocurrency ATM ordinance? Okay. Hearing none. I say we breeze by seven new business and eight other matters for discussion. Of course, if you have anything you'd like to discuss, I think it equally fits into nine general communication as it does in seven and eight. So let's kick it to Austin for nine A, site development update report, please.
Thank you, Tim. At two seven zero zero Southfield Road, Discount Tire received administrative approval for interior and exterior renovations, including update to the sales and office areas, installation of protection walls, new finishes and fixtures, and repainting of exterior facade. The project also includes the installation of two new principal wall signs, and additional wall sign is permitted as the property is a corner lot within the commercial vehicular zoning district. Many of you probably have seen, the painting of the facade, the exterior has been completed, the signs are up, they are continuing to complete the interior work. And just to the south was at two seven three zero zero Southfield Road, Skyler Laundromat, Flush Nails and the Vapor Shop. Plan Commission reviewed and issued a zoning interpretation confirming that laundromat is a permitted use, allowing the project to proceed. The approved site plan permits retail and personal care use in the units within the plaza. Nail Salon and Smoke Shop have completed installation of their signage and are finalizing interior buildout. Both of those are in the final stages, as well as a clothing store. And the laundromat has been open for some time now. There is one, two outstanding items. One, the, the barrier wall on the east side of the lot, on the other side of the alleyway between the residential district and the commercial district. That wall is currently, the, the type of wall the developer wants to install is being reviewed by our engineering consultant to see that it is sufficient, and hopefully that will be installed shortly. And then they will need to get a temporary encroachment license because, with, from council, because the two-way alleyway has been converted to a one-way with angled parking along the building. So we are working with the developer, they are cooperating, and we'll get those items resolved. Across the street at two seven four one Southfield Road, Jay Bird's Bar and Grill, they received administrative approval to install a canopy structure over the existing paved patio area. The addition will provide shade and weather protection for outdoor seating and does not alter the building footprint or require additional site plan review. This is a canopy that had already been installed for some time. It was removed a number of years ago. We actually went and met with Jay, the owner of the restaurant, and we walked the site. It is paved, so the canopy is not gonna affect any type of stormwater management. It was all flowing down to the same location it'll currently be flowing. And he showed us the original footings that were there, they're still in the concrete. So this is something that he's taking quite pride in, and he plans to build it out to engineering standards and building is reviewing to make sure that everything's being done, completed, do according to state code. Two six six zero zero Southfield Road, Hoblar Auto Parts, see site plan approval from the Commission. Two six six zero zero Southfield Road, Hoblar Auto Parts, received site plan approval from the commission on January twenty first. Interior and exterior buildout has been completed. The zoning board of appeals granted a variance request to increase size of the principal wall sign on August eighteenth, twenty twenty five. They are currently in the process of getting the signage installed. They're completing interior work, and they're also gonna bring the monument sign back to life and use it there along Southfield Road. Just to the north of them at two six seven one zero Southfield Road, Primal Eat Nutrition, they've requested approval for a change of use of a commercial unit located in the mixed-use district, converting the existing personal care use to retail. The approved use is for pre-made meal business, which prepares meals off-site in a commercial kitchen and sells them at the retail location. Plan Commission approved the application at the May twentieth, twenty twenty five meeting, and the permanent wall sign was installed in June. They also had some exterior wall signage that, that exceeded our 10% limit. Our code enforcement worked with them, they were very cooperative, they removed it, and they are very close to opening. So we're excited to have them. They have about eleven locations throughout Metro Detroit, and we're lucky to have one of them located here in Lazer Village. To the north, the former school at two seven seven zero zero Southfield Road. The project concept was approved by the Historic District Commission in February. On April nineteenth, twenty twenty five, they've received site plan approval for the historic preservation and adaptive reuse of Lazer Village, former school for residential mixed-use purposes. The approved plan proposes converting the building into multi-family housing, co-working space and activity event space. City Council approved the ordinance payment in lieu of taxes, their pilot application for the redevelopment of the property on September fifteenth. The developer is currently awaiting review of their request for financing from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. It was our understanding that it was going to take place during the first or second week of October, they're still waiting for a response. So the project will either move forward or could hit a little bit of a rollback if this financing isn't approved. The current finance rates on the open market are quite high, and would make the project financially unfeasible, where the state program offers loans to developers at a lower rate that they can receive from the market and give it out at, at that rate. So the developer is waiting to hear back from MISTDA if they have received it. It's between them and a few other projects throughout the state. And they have worked with MISTDA over the last, at least two or three months, providing additional information that they've asked. So they've been very engaged with them, and they are, they're keen on the project. So we'll see, fingers crossed that they'll get the financing. And just so you're also aware, our code permit tech, Steve Quilley and I spoke. There are some project aspects in here that come across his desk, but don't necessarily come across my desk in a timely manner. So we're gonna meet on a monthly basis so that we can make this report a little more robust and provide a little more digital detail on where the projects are, at what step, at what stage, so that all of you are aware. That's all we got today, Tim.
That'll be very useful. Is there any discussion or questions for Austin on these updates?
Question. Uh, the school redevelopment, if the MISTDA developer loan doesn't come through, is that a?
It's not an absolute.
What happened?
Death nail to the project, but it's, the project has received site plan approval. The project has received all approvals from the Historic District Commission, so they can proceed with the project. It would just be them going back to the drawing board to figure out the financing. But they've been very open with the numbers, and the margins are very, very tight on the project.
So it wouldn't scrap the project?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions for Austin? Very good. Thank you, Austin, I appreciate the thoroughness of this, and I welcome even more of it, according to what you just mentioned. So moving on to general communication, nine B, review attendance policies.
So this is an item, and I'd like to have Jason chime in on this. That city council has been reviewing for all boards and commission is for the attendance. I will say that this body has done a fantastic job with your attendance. I, I don't think I can think of one meeting where we cancel it due to a lack of quorum. We have canceled due to a lack of items on the agenda, but never because people were not willing to attend. And today, everybody is in attendance, it's fantastic, so I thank you all for your commitment. So Jason, if you don't mind providing a little overview of the discussion that occurred at study session last night?
Yes, so we requested to add to the study session agenda discussion around this topic of attendance by commissioners and board members who were appointed by city council, ostensibly to figure out if we needed to add additional language or provide some direction to commissions and boards around attendance. And what we discovered is that the charter already has language specifically around attendance. It's not stated explicitly as here are the attendance requirements for each board and commission, but instead what it does is it, there's a section on vacancies in boards and commissions that talks about conditions under which a appointed commissioner or board member might be seen as violating their obligations to the board or commission through certain number of consecutive absences or absences within a specific fiscal year. So it seems like we already have language in place. Now, I will state two things, one is, this question came up because on this specific commission, we had a couple of members who missed a lot of meetings, right? And, and there was a point when we didn't have seven planning commissioners, we only had five. And the reason why we added, voted to add, the city council chose to add two additional planning commission seats was because we were having problems with quorum. So it looked like that, that fix solved that problem. As you noted, we haven't had to cancel any planning commission meetings because of a lack of quorum, but that was a problem before. So long and short of this is, you know, we, we, we have the pieces in place to encourage and, and provide guidance to appointed commissioners and board members around what their expectations are around attendance. And so the idea was to review the language from the charter in this meeting, see if there's any questions or discussion about it, make sure that everybody, especially since we have so many relatively new commission members, is aware of what the expectations are, what the charter says about this.
I'll just add to that, that council also discussed about, you know, as, as this references, that these, they're unexcused absences. Four consecutive meetings missed without an excused absence. So the policies are in place that if you're, you or a council member or any other board member isn't going to be able to make a meeting, to let Austin know, let the city administrator know, let the chair know, let somebody know that you're not going to be there, and that way you can be excused. That's a practice that we kind of got away with at all levels. Absences were excused without notice being provided oftentimes. Oftentimes it wasn't, or it wasn't even addressed, and then there was no follow-up or follow-through. So it's, the council was committed to enforcing those policies and educating all board members of the requirements for, related to attendance, and then also, just like I said, making sure that we are following through on that, should, should the issue arise. But fortunately, it, it's only happened a couple of times in almost twenty years I've been with the city, so hopefully we don't have, have to address that at any point, so.
Yeah, but I think it's important that people just have very clear direction on what the expectations are. So do you want to read it, do you want me to read it?
I can read it. The commissioners also are fantastic at responding RSVP for the, the meetings. I really appreciate it, to let us know because it allows us to understand if we're gonna have quorum or not, so I appreciate it. So section five point one three, variances in boards and commissions. The officer of any member of any board or commission created by or pursuant to this charter shall be declared vacant by the council. Part A, for any reason specified by statute or by this charter as creating a vagancy in office. Part B, if the officer shall be found guilty by competent tribunal of any act constituting, constituting misconduct in office under the provision of this charter. Part C, such officer shall miss four consecutive regular meetings of such board or commission or 25% of such meetings in any fiscal year of the city unless such absences shall be excused by such board or commission and the reason therefore entered in the proceedings of such board or commission at the time of each absence. Part D, if the officer is removed from office by the council in accordance with the provisions of section five point four.
I think it's pretty straightforward. The only question I had, which was already answered by Attorney Baker earlier, is what is the city's fiscal year? And FYI, the city's fiscal year is July one through June thirtieth, so that was my only question. Are there other questions?
Can you repeat that, you said July?
It's July one through June thirtieth.
Thank you.
I agree, Austin, that there's not much concern when it comes to the planning commission. We have excellent attendance rates typically, and the instances of truancy we have had are with singular people, and those don't necessarily affect quorum. Doomsday to me, worst-case scenario to me, is an evening when a nervous prospective business owner has put their suit on to stand in front of us intimidating seven people to talk about their site plan, and only three of us are here. And not only does that deflate his or her energy and enthusiasm for doing business in Lazer Village, it also might mess up their timeline of opening their proposed business. So quorum is very important when, when people's site plans are hinging upon it. And so for that reason, of course, it's very important for us to meet it every time. And, you know, it may be the case that, you know, five of us are sick at once, that's okay too.
Things happen.
At least then we can provide Austin the prior notification necessary to let that person know they can leave the suit hanging in the closet, and unfortunately we'll have to push it to the next month because of illness or whatever the obstacle might be. But it seems pretty straightforward to me, so long as we provide Austin notification of our absences, we should be good to go. And quorum shouldn't be too big of an issue for us.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with this body, with the current members on it.
I agree. Any other questions or discussion? All right, are there any other matters for general communication? I had a few, but.
There, there was one, another one that came up in study session yesterday. The city council had tossed around the idea of making an amendment to the sign ordinance, but since that was at one point part of the zoning ordinance, it is now general. They wanted to give the planning commission some sort of say in it. So it's not something that we're going to talk about today, obviously, but maybe further down the line, this will be coming up to you guys for some sort of discussion. So just putting that bug in your ear, if you have any thoughts about it, if you want to review it, we can provide the ordinance for you, but just, you know, keep that in your mind that we might be reviewing that for some sort of change this coming winter.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I've been to many city council meeting and study session where sign ordinances have been topics of conversation, and I appreciate council for considering us. I do think we're relevant to that type of decision-making in their decision-making, so thank you for the heads up. Anybody else? I just have a few quick items. First, per Austin's email and per discussion last month, we were given instruction to create Lazer Village Planning Commission specific email addresses for ourselves. If you haven't already, please create one. Austin, if you wouldn't mind, again, sending out notice of this. He included the email address I created for myself as an example. I don't think it's mandatory by any means to follow my lead in terms of formatting, but just as an example, mine is thillman.lvpcc@gmail.com. So something similar to that, so that if there's ever a FOIA request, for example, about correspondence going back and forth between any of us in the city or the council, et cetera, we don't have to turn over our entire personal email accounts and all of the expired coupons and junk mail that's in them to the person making that FOIA request. So I do think it's important for us to consolidate our correspondence to dedicated email addresses for the planning commission. Would you mind, Austin, speaking briefly? You made a note about quorum and the importance of using our planning commission email addresses appropriately in terms of not overexchanging with email?
Yes, just as a reminder for all, part of the Open Meetings Act that is enforced at the state level, there cannot be private communication outside of a public meeting. And Scott, if I miss anything, please jump in. In any communications that's done via email and that is not opened up and revealed at a public meeting is very, it's, you're, you're violating the Open Meetings Act, so please keep, when you do respond, if I were to email everybody, I'd blind copy everybody on emails, if you were to hit reply all, that would include everybody, please don't just hit reply to go directly to me so that we don't have to even skirt around any Open Meetings Act issues. And then also, just as a reminder, if there happens to be an event where a majority of you are in, in attendance, please do not discuss any matters related to the planning commission, because that would also be a violation of Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, basically, all discussions, all deliberations on, on anything that this body votes on has, have to take place in a public, open public meeting. So by, even if it's just kind of innocent back and forth, if five of you are on an email thread and you're discussing something that's going to come before this body, that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So, yeah, what Austin said, don't hit reply all. If you do have questions about a specific thing, it's appropriate to email Austin and the chair. Kind of use the chair as kind of the funnel, and then he can get the answer from Austin and then can address it during the meetings. Just, just a good, a good reminder that, that reply all gets you in trouble, so.
Sure. So dedicated email accounts and limited email discussion, very good. Second, at yesterday's city council meeting, our solar ordinance, which we discussed so many times and put Tom through the wringer on, had its day in court, and council passed it pretty swiftly and with enthusiastic commentary. So thank you to everybody on this commission for their attention to that matter, and especially thank you to you, Tom, for your diligent work on the matter. It was a slam dunk.
I appreciate it, I appreciate the, the shout-out.
No problem. Next, thank you again to everybody for your attendance at the kickoff meeting for our master plan update. I think we were in perfect attendance that evening as well.
I believe so, yes, very proud of them, too.
I dare another board or commission to say the same thing for themselves. Two quick notes on that. Well, first is a question. Austin, do you have any idea what the next phase of that will be and when it will be?
There is a timeline, and I can provide it to everybody in my, in an email.
Okay. One request, if you wouldn't mind bringing this to Mr. Green's attention. My only feedback about that event was the short public notice given for it. I believe it, it occurred on a Monday, and the public notice for it went out on a Thursday. I do think it was great that so many residents were there at the fringes of the room to participate in the activities. I think we could have had more, had they more, had more than three days' notice to attend. So that's what I would hope for going forward, maybe a week's notice or so, just to get more people in the room.
Okay.
I had to leave early because of a family obligation, but I submitted my own responses in writing to all of the issues. And I don't know, I submitted it to Coulson, Austin, and I'm not sure how it goes into the mix.
Yes, Lisa, we discussed that. We discussed when things are received via email, how are they included into the meeting minutes? Do you recall where we left off with that?
It should be in your, I would think, agenda packet if he was emailing it to you.
Okay.
And then you could just go over it, you know, the different points of it. He can use it as his own notes because it was all relative to the master plan, which will be discussed in the future.
Scott, would it be appropriate to be in meeting minutes if it was not an actual, it was a joint meeting?
Yeah, it was a, I guess it's, it's kind of contingent on the timing. If, if the comments were received after the meeting, then it's, but if, I believe it's, if it's received by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, if it's sent, the comments are sent to the clerk, then they can be read into the meeting record, and then at that point, they would become a part of memorialized in the minutes. But if it's sent after the fact, obviously your, your comments can and should be considered by, by, by Eric and the, and the other planners at Giffords that are working on it. But in terms of being in the meeting minutes, it would have had to have been submitted in advance.
So we would have to share it with, with them as, as a report to them?
Yeah, just additional comments that were received, and I do believe that they.
And they haven't passed on.
Typically, they do open it up and allow for the public to comment. I think they talked about having a dedicated website set up specifically for this master plan revisit, so those can be incorporated into that, so that they can, they can receive that. so that they can receive that feedback and account for it.
So I just want to say, our minutes are not verbatim either of what people say. So for city council, for example, they have agenda packets, and then like Councilmember Hammond will read something, or Mayor Garrett will read something that was emailed, and the minutes are just a brief thing. Email was read concerning the subject. It's not verbatim, and so it's recorded here. So if what you sent him, you want read at the meeting, next meeting involving the master plan, that possibly could be, but since you're a member, you're also someone that could read your points. But like he said, they're going to have open feedback for that, and they're looking for more feedback. I know you took a lot of time and always have a lot of great ideas, so there's just different ways to share it, but we don't do verbatim minutes.
I'd be happy for you to...
At next meeting, if you'd like to...
Put in the open feedback.
Oh, would you like feedback? Is that what you said?
In this more open process that you mentioned.
Oh, okay, maybe at the next... Yep, at the next public event where we have Giffords Webster conducting public input, I think that would be a fantastic location for it to be read, or if you'd like, at the next meeting, you can read it out loud.
It's too long.
But it has been passed along to Giffords, so they do have.
Can I suggest, you know, Tom, maybe, I don't know if this is allowed, attorney could help maybe PowerPoint what you were saying to highlight the main points of it?
For our next meeting or for...
Yes, because I'm sure you have like main points and some sub-points, and...
Yes.
Maybe he could do that, so you're not reading so much, but then, you know.
If I'm not mistaken, the subject of your letter to us following October 6th was the SWOT analysis from the meeting. So, and it was in-depth, and I appreciate your words and your concerns, and so does Giffords Webster. If you so desire, I can turn it into a PowerPoint for you. I could read it off for you. If not, I'll leave that to be your call.
Let's just discuss it afterwards. I have a copy of it here.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the topic of our master plan meeting or upcoming master plan meetings? Okay, I've got one more thing, if you don't mind. I've been chewing on, and I spoke at our last meeting, about the topic of land disposition. There, for example, on the west side of the city, I know Commissioner Robinson and I are likely to drive past it on our way home, because we live very close to each other. There's a triangular plot of land that is just forested. It's very close to Rita's Ice, for example. As I understand it, as-is, the planning commission doesn't have a role in the decision to dispose of city-owned property. Would that be your understanding?
To my understanding, the planning commission does not have a direct role in the decision if city property is going to be sold, but they would have a say in the development process. So any type of development that would come, that would qualify for a site plan review would be presented to planning commission, and input would then be provided to the applicant regarding their compliance with our zoning ordinance and master plan.
But that initial decision to dispose of city-owned property is not necessarily something that includes...
That's strictly within the purview of city council. They have the authority to sell or acquire property.
That was also my finding, and I did find exactly one example of a city that operates differently. There were a few more that operated in the realm of difference, I suppose, but the city of Big Rapids, for example, requires decisions of land disposition to flow through the planning commission in advance of meeting what they call their city commission, our city council, for example. And so I don't, in my own research, I didn't find that it was common for planning commissions to be consulted in advance of the decision to dispose of land. But I think the reason I've been chewing on this so much is that we live in a city that has so little empty land to dispose of. To my knowledge, there's really only two parcels, and one of which is owned by the DDA, not even the city itself, that could possibly be developed, unless we're talking about raiding ourselves of a park or the property in which we're currently sitting, or maybe the property at which the DPW building sits.
And there's the commercial lot on the south side.
Sure. So I don't think there's cause, unless somebody else does, to request that the planning commission be considered in that decision, simply because I don't think I found enough examples of it to request that. But the other side of my thinking relates to the master plan. And we've just embarked on this process of updating a master plan simultaneous to seeking bids on a parcel of land that seems like it would be quite pertinent to discussions of the master plan. So that's where I'm focused now. Originally, I was focused on, should we request some type of ordinance language to ensure that land disposition flows through us? I've kind of let that go, because I just don't think it's common enough to request in this case. But I still have... I'm still chewing on this master plan of it all, and I'm curious if we should consider making a request to council to perhaps pause solicitation of bids on this empty parcel until and after we complete our revision of the master plan. But I don't know if I'm alone in that thinking. I'm just worried that we have so little land left to develop that once it's sold, where else could there ever be another park? Where else could there ever be a place to put a statue, or a fountain, or whatever might go there if it's sold to a developer? So I'd be curious to know how this commission feels about making some type of request for putting a pause on solicitation of bids for this piece of land until the master plan is updated.
I have a question. So in updating of the master plan, would you be able to like explain like a link between what could potentially be updated and...
So part of it would be the future land use map, so where zoning may change over time. So that would be where I would see some type of input in the master plan process would be with the future land use map.
And to add to that, their future land use, also, I think it's not unheard of to contemplate future use of city-owned properties as a component of the master plan. You know, that's what, historically, there was a phase where the city was trying to acquire more property for the idea of having pocket parks and things like that in the city. And then it's kind of shifted to, now that we're in a situation where the city is looking to kind of increase tax revenue and getting more of these city-owned properties back under the private tax rules, divesting some of that city-owned property. So, but I do think it's appropriate, as part of the master plan, to kind of, to have some input from not only these bodies, but also the residents on how they want to see these parcels utilized. To the point where you brought up about an ordinance amendment, the language that empowers the council as the sole body for transactions related to real properties in the city charter. So that would require a charter amendment, which would have to be approved by the voters. That's probably, and I'm just guessing here, but that's probably why you don't see very many communities with it, because most of them contain that authority in their charter, and planning commissions are relatively new to the scene for a lot of communities. Oftentimes, this city, in fact, previously, the city council, just as they are, the ZDA, they were also the planning commission. So they kind of considered everything just by default, because they were the only public body. So I don't see, I don't see that that is really a realistic possibility, but, you know, city council always could, could, as they're going to do with a sign ordinance, defer things to this body to kind of do the fact-finding for them, hold public hearings, things of that nature. So that's something that we could bring back to council if they would like to task this body with that. There's, I don't see any reason why they couldn't do that, to kind of explore alternative uses, or... We even, I mean, I'm looking at you, but you weren't here when we had the House in the Woods. The planning commission did also, and Giffords Webster, our planner, Joe Bame at the time, presented some different ideas of potential uses for the House in the Woods property. There was one concept of like micro homes, bigger homes. So it's not, again, it's not unheard of that this body would weigh in on the idea of selling or redeveloping the city-owned property, but there's just, there's no legal mechanism that requires it.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to what you said. So the alternative use, is that something we'd have to vote on today to bring to council, so that they would allow time for that, or that would be through the avenue of the master plan?
I was pointing and nodding at Jason as liaison, you know, when council meets next, he can bring this up to council that this body has discussed the desire, or at least the willingness to offer their services and trying to find maybe some alternative solutions or uses for that city-owned property.
I was just asking, because I like the idea of that, of not giving it away so quickly and pondering on what that would look like to use that in the future.
Assuming there is a bid on this property, we, this body, would evaluate the site plan that was born of that bid according to ordinances in a master plan that exists today. And so my concern, as we're... My concern is there's something at odds about updating the master plan at the same time we're shedding a parcel of land. That is one of the very few spaces in our city that a master plan committee could be like fully imaginative about, if that makes sense. So that's my reservation.
Just to add, because I do know that one of the parcels, which is the one that's owned by the DDA, that is out of the city council's hands, so they really don't have any control. That's owned by the DDA. The DDA can sell that without input or approval required from city council or any other body. But my understanding is I think there's already...
There's a bid received.
There's a bid received, a proposal received, and Mike just sent me last night the draft purchase agreement that we need to work on. So that one might be a little late to kind of pause, but with respect to any other parcel, I absolutely think that it's appropriate for this body to...
During last Friday's DDA board meeting, it was presented to them. It is a very unique idea. It is one that I think is very digestible with that area of the city. It would be an urban nursery that would be low-impact, would actually manage stormwater on-site. It'd actually be of benefit, because a lot of the plants would be watered with those plants, or with that water. It also would not have increased traffic with the new high school becoming housing units. There is concern by residents that the increased traffic could flow through the neighborhood. This use would not have that. It would be only a couple cars on-site. There would be also an educational aspect to it. Think about, at U of M Dearborn, there is an area where they have workshops and present different items about nature to residents and classes. This would also have that, and they've already been in discussion with their neighboring property in the north, the church, talk about just how they can work together, possibly on a farmer's market. But it's somebody who has actually worked in city government, a former employee of Letherton, or of Ferndale. They work at Urban Nursery now, and she's very excited. She has an investor, and DDA board was very excited about the idea.
So it's for the triangle?
Yes.
Specifically, the triangle on the east side of town, which is owned by the DDA, as opposed to the triangle on the west side of town, which is owned by the city itself.
And there were no bids received for that property.
Can you give me more detail on east, where that is specifically?
I wish I could tell you the crossroads.
Basically, if you look out that window, you could probably see the corner of California.
It's, yeah, it's right across from the church, that dirt road.
Just north of the school and just east of the church.
Okay.
What is that? What's the zone? Is that residential, or is that business?
That's Village Center.
That's Village Center, yep.
So if there were bids for that land, what type of use could go in?
They can, it could be a commercial use. It could be a multi-family use. It can go up to three stories. But this is something that is low-impact. It utilizes the land in a way that would be a public benefit with stormwater due to our drainage ditch system. And also, I believe that the applicant is, has the ability and the knowledge and the experience to actually bring the project to fruition.
So I'm talking about the west?
Same, same district, yep. Yeah, you can actually see it on the map behind you. And then to the north?
This one right here?
That one right there. That's the DDA. No, the other one, Joe.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I see it. This one here, and that one?
No, it's the, yes, southwest.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, the DDA one is the northeast, and the southwest is city-owned. And they're about the same size. They're about .35 of an acre.
So just so I'm clear on what I'm asking the council to do, well, to the master plan. The request is to consider pausing any action on the city-owned parcel until there's an opportunity to provide input into the master plan about future land use?
That would be a good summary, in my opinion.
Okay.
Look, there's a version of this that could be received from me as, "How dare you not consider us on the disposition of the land?" That's not the spirit of this at all. The spirit of this, for me, is I feel like we have an opportunity to be uber-mega-super democratic over the course of this master plan process, in terms of how board members, council members, and residents alike can weigh in on the future use of one of these very few empty parcels of land that the city has control over. And why not seize the opportunity to make this parcel of land a topic of conversation in the master plan process, so that we can get as much democratic input as possible in terms of its fate?
The most democratic and capitalistic, I guess, way would be for residents to come together and purchase the lot and invest themselves into it.
That's one way of looking at it.
Put some solar panels down on it?
Nature preserve. I like it for the deer. I'm sorry.
And I think that's something...
They tried the nature preserve route with the House in the Woods property.
I think the, I think one of the comments that we got about both the northeast and the southwest properties were that a lot of the natural, the foliage that were in there were invasive species, and there was going to be a lot of clear-cutting that has to be done. On the northeast side, she was prepared to do the clear-cutting and everything that has to be done, and actually wants to be able to get at it into the winter, because it's easier to knock those down in the winter than it is in the summer. So I think that's what a lot of people are kind of weary about doing, is that there's going to be a lot of abatement that has to be done with invasive species, and that kind of, that can be very expensive, too.
Sure. The only thing I'd add to that is, I don't know this to be true, but I would venture to guess that Parks and Recommendation, Parks and Recreation may want some input into this as well, and perhaps they've already had an opportunity to provide it. I don't know. But again, I feel like this master plan update process would not only provide this body more say on the matter, but also Parks and Rec, which I think, to Commissioner Robinson's point, may very well have opinions on how this could be used for a natural purpose that isn't full of invasive species, but a micro park, et cetera. So that's all I've got to say.
Yeah, I just want to add that just because the city council requested, or posted a request for quotes or for proposals, it doesn't mean that the city council is committed to taking an action on those proposals. A lot of the talk in the city council meetings about the property that the city owns is just to understand what ideas might a developer or a private individual have about how they might want, what they might want to do with that property. And once we have that information, then we don't like, because this is the second time we've actually submitted a RFP for this property, and the first time, we got zero responses. So that was a clear indication at that time that, all right, nobody's interested in doing anything with this property, so it's just going to stay where it's at for the time being. Now, looks like there's going to be at least one proposal that's received, but even receiving that proposal doesn't obligate the council to actually complete the transaction.
And going off what Jason said, that the DAKNA was written in a manner that not the lowest bidder would get the property, the individual who had the best proposal would get the property.
Okay. Dog park, all right. See, ideas are already brilliant. Well, I appreciate that, and if you wouldn't mind running that past your friends on the council, I'd appreciate it.
No problem.
Is, are there any other general communication matters? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Speak now or forever hold your peace? Very good. Hearing none? I'm sorry, do I need a motion to adjourn? I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. I, all opposed. Hearing no opposed, the meeting is over. Thank you, everybody.